Morning.
I'll need to order. We have a forum, I'd take the motion to approve the agenda in the minutes, please. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
No, sir.
Alright, so I'll favor I.
Alright.
Bye. Both. Here. Morning, Rich.
Morning.
My husband on that one almost went over his teeth. He actually hit his head on the top and he's gone over the one I killed there. Wow. He made the news.
Yeah, I see that. The one on the state line was the one we, the actual patches.
A road patch.
That's not. Just so you guys know, we haven't put those pavements down. That same design is long gone. We're doing things different. They're still out there and it's the QT, many of them doing it. The joints lock up and the concrete can.
A few more concrete pots too, I think.
Yeah.
On my road as I walk this morning, I know it's rolling, rolling the cracks, there's chunks coming up.
Yep, so they're stressing out a little bit.
Yep.
Keep an eye on those. That's that. Turned our town, we didn't turn our days this week, so we'll see how this works out with our small staffs on Monday and Friday. Um, the thing we have is uh, this professional services agreement for WHKS, Brookfield thirty-three, which is the Oak Creek Bridge. Killed here, it's uh, the piling are pretty tough on that, uh, so. It's a double T being ridge sixty-four feet long, I think it is. Deck is really good, it's got a gap in the grout came through, so we'll repair that when we get there, but the, the biggest thing is the piling. Are bad, and so we're talking about uh, some sistering techniques, the issue with that one, the reason that I don't feel comfortable having our crews do it is because we got a cofferdam stuff, it's always wet under there. So we'll have the contractor, it'll have WHKS put some plants together, we'll bid that out as a maintenance project. And we'll let people that work in the water, work in the water, that know what to do on that kind of thing. When it's dry, we can do it, but trying to cofferdam things out, I don't think we've got the, the expertise, we need to do that kind of thing, so. Um, and then we'll do part of that project, there's a little bit of spalling repair from the. Double T set on the gap, we'll get repaired and then we'll get that grout back there, the back wall will be fixed too, so. I know there's some suck holes that happen there once in a while, that's the back wall. Scour our honor, that's all the things, there's a lot of that stuff to get fixed, but the professional service agreement for that kind of work, um, will have some fee of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, so. Let you guys discuss, are there any questions on that?
Well, it's a lot to perfection waiting until it's a.
Yeah.
Have a man.
Tell you have to close it.
Close it. Bargain.
Right.
Put a new bridge into the same capacity, I'm sure the uh, major.
Well, the, the, the thing is, is that's, the deck isn't really decent shape yet, so.
Right.
Yeah, if we can save, we can get several more years out, I'd say for eleven thousand.
For eleven thousand dollars.
Well, that's just the engineering fees, that's not the maintenance.
So.
Yeah.
Still, yeah. It's not gonna be.
But then they can engineer with this repair to keep it up to.
Yeah, when we do repairs.
Barbed or nothing like that.
We'll, we'll be using our bridge funding on this, and we've got to make the repairs such that they last at least as long as. That's at least last ten years, well, what we're gonna, the technique is gonna be a longer life situation, or a longer life design than that, so.
We could actually roll, listen to the tip discussion too.
It's, it's programmed for this year, or this next fiscal year, for next season to be repaired, so it's in the program for us, so we're.
Well, that sounds good, so taking a motion to approve this professional services agreement for that Brookfield Bridge.
So moved.
Your second?
I'll second it.
There's discussion on it. All favor I.
Bye.
Bye. Both. Motion here. Want me to sign this?
Be nice. Thank you. Other than that, uh, don't have a whole lot to discuss this morning.
I had a question. I had a, somebody come up to me, what class rock do we dump on our gravel roads right now?
Class, I don't know if you want to call it the class on it, we have a gradation that we're using for. We use the, we use a, a durability factor, durability in our gradation, so if we've got a softer rock. We use a cleaner gradation, if we've got a harder rock, we're using, uh, we use a little bit durer because we need fines to tie stuff together. And I'm sure the questions probably be due into the fines.
Yeah, they, they notice a lot of fines.
We've got a lot of hard rock in this area, but people don't understand, most people don't understand that the rock we have here is hard. But it still breaks down, and so our hardness numbers in this area are in the upper twenties, low to mid thirties. To put that in perspective. Counties north of here, or even not even, not even in this area, I know Minnesota, in northern Minnesota, they, they're lucky to get a sixty hardness, which is soft. So, I mean, we've got some pretty decent rock here. Uh, the fines are what everybody worries about, and then, and I'll, I'll say this, that. Yes, the rock breaks down, we've got heavy loads, we don't. When the rock doesn't tie in, it rolls around and breaks down, if we need the rock to tie in, which you need fines to do. Then this stuff doesn't stay as dusty, it doesn't roll around, break down, so it lasts longer, it bridges the loads, the problem we have. And every county has this problem, is you can't put enough down. To get you to lock the aggregate together, I mean, you go out on our roads and you start digging in the base. Uh, we'd be lucky to get a two inch base of rock, and then we're down to the subgrade already. There's a program that we can use with the Iowa County Engineer Services that we have. Um, that can give us optimized gradation, where we can take a sample off the road. And then run that gradation, and then we can tell them what we want, you know, what we use as the core, and it'll optimize the gradation we want, problem is. You have to use, I think it's three times the diameter of your largest aggregate, so if we're putting a one inch rock down, they want you to put three inches down, we don't. We don't have the money to put three inches of rock down, and that's sad to say, but we don't, the rock we put down now. If we're putting a one inch aggregate down, and we're putting two hundred tons down a mile, we're not getting a half an inch. So, we got a one inch rock out there, but we're only putting down a half an inch worth of rock, we're not get, we don't, we can't afford it, and so. You put harder rock down, it just rolls around and it breaks down slower, but when it doesn't get to bind in and lock in, you go through a dust control. What do you see when you go through a dust, or you got a hard pad, hard pad, because you got moisture and you got the compaction in there, and there's no dust. But the rest of the roads, they're all rolling around loose because we don't have the moisture to lock things in, and the dust control provides that moisture, because it sucked the moisture in from the air, and so. Roads are dusty, rock rolls around. And so, I guess, the fix to dusty roads and everything else is to put more down, but. It'll, I'll tell you, it's, I, I have a spreadsheet, I don't have it made here, but I gave it to my board of Mitchell County that explains. How much rock you eat, how much you need to spend a year, and if we put down four inches of rock on roads. We could probably afford to do ten miles a year, and it would take us thirty years to get back to those ten miles. To put that much rock down, because of all the gravel roads we have.
So we're just not in a position to tie it together.
Well.
Someone.
There are a lot of fines in the roads, and that's what makes it sloppy, we don't get the compaction we do, when you, when we detour, like when we detoured one oh five, and we had everybody running. I don't remember what, four fifty, I'm down that way, that got hard as a rock, because we had the traffic. We had moisture at times, and once the traffic hits, it packs in real good, I didn't ever want to touch it. It was like a highway, that's what we need for gravel roads, we just don't get it, we don't have the traffic. We don't have. So, there are times where we get the wheel paths are nice and hard, and you got other loose rock around there, that's not safe either, because. You got great braking on the hard pan, but the minute you move off on that. On those marbles, now you're all over the road, and you've lost traction, and you. It's not as safe, so you, what we try to do is we try to keep everything consistent, so when we're all bladed, everything's kind of loose, so you slow down. In case you meet somebody, but you know, there's, the happy meter, the best gravel road is one that looks like a road, like a hard church road. We just can't get it, we don't have the traffic.
You can see those high traffic roads.
Yeah, those high traffic roads.
You don't see the big rock on it, but they are just.
And the cleaner we put, the, the cleaner rock we put down, the less fines we have to work with it, but the biggest thing is we can't get the thickness of rock. Shouldn't say we can't, we can't afford to. Yeah, I mean. When they were running uh, wind towers out there, all the traffic out in that northeast corner.
They got hard.
And they were watering those roads, and they were rolling those roads, and they packed in our nights. When they put six inch rock down, that was the best thing for those roads. They stuck well over a million dollars in those roads.
It's just a small number of roads.
So, I don't know what that answer.
Yeah.
The class of rock, we don't have a class, we, we go by hardness, we're not putting three I aggregate, three I concrete stone down, we couldn't afford that. But, you know, I don't have this class two rock, whatever. We go by the durability of it.
Your decision that asked me, lives in Worth County, but he, he's worked for Minnesota, and he said, they're the use of class six, they were just kind of wondering what it was.
Minnesota's got a whole different termination of aggregate.
Southern Minnesota, you know, all their rock comes from?
Comes from these. We're using the same, the same beds they're using, I don't think we're using different beds, and the gradations are really similar, but so.
Because I, I went on the roads, went over, looked at them, and there was a lot of fines, and they said Minnesota was better, so I went up there and drove around, it wasn't a difference.
Those are narrower, so when they put two hundred tons a mile down, they're.
They get more narrower width.
Now. I'm not going to suggest this, but we could narrow our roads down, and then we could put, the rock we put down would be a little thicker, but. We're not gonna sit here and take our twenty-eight foot wide roads down to twenty feet, just because we want to.
There's some out there that I think you really could.
Yeah.
Narrow down.
Well, it got wide over the years, but. Over time, traffic pushes the roads out, and so now when we put two hundred, two hundred, three hundred ton, ton a mile down, that spreads even more. You know, most people drive toward the middle of the road, so it's always kind of harder there, and then when it rains out, the road, so some people gotta move over to the side, that's what we have. Well, and a lot of times too, when we get bladed, you know, we try to pull things toward the middle, and then it rains right after we get done doing it, so now you got all the fines in the middle, now it's sloppy in the middle until it. Dries out, and then it gets hard and dusty, and it's an endless cycle of we can't keep up.
More money than any of them. I'll hand that back to Rich.
Oh, yes, I'm not saying that it's impossible to do things like that, it's just, I don't know where the money comes from to do what we need to do.
Right, at least I got an answer.
Well.
Like say, if it's southern Minnesota, you know they're using the same rock, you see those guys all.
They're all hauling from out here.
Any difference when you. They just.
Probably doesn't have the traffic down, so when they spread it and they bladed it, it's all, you can see the larger aggregate on top, so it looks cleaner, you know, and. You know, a lot of people suggest that, well, we should put cleaner rock down, because in somebody's driveway, it works really well, well, you're not driving fifty-five miles an hour on your driveway. And there's less traffic when you drive within there is on a road, you might have the same heavy loads on it, but. Uh, there's a difference when you're driving at speed, now I was just driving, I tried. I tried to, I wanted to take a video out of my, because I'm looking in my side mirror, and I'm looking, and my tires are throwing rock and ditch. You know, we're losing rock from driving, and we're losing rock from falling, so it happens, and you're losing rock through the breakdown in the dust.
Start paving more, right?
Yeah, well, okay. And I can send you what I do, I'll, I'll make a copy, there's a research that has been done back in the eighties or nineties of rock is rock, but it'll tell you. The numbers that. The, the lost numbers per year in tons per mile are about what we're putting down. I'll give you some information, you can read through it, it's pretty interesting stuff, but it's research done by the Iowa State, Iowa Land use. It's not a simple answer, it's, it's not a simple problem.
He said to get back, I still.
Money can fix a lot of things.
Yeah.
It's probably what you guys get the most calls for, isn't it, something to do with roads?
Yeah.
It's the most visible, other than the sheriff's office, it's one of the most visible things out there, everybody uses.
Everybody uses.
Yeah, anything else, Rich? Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ah, drainage, I did see some claims. Motion to approve the uh, Stanford's for drainage. I'll make a motion to approve them. Certainly. All favor I.
Bye.
Bye. Both. Here. Did we, we're that one already? Give you one of mine, but they're all left-handed, so. Got a meeting tomorrow, ten o'clock. Need to ten? Get much response on that, are we gonna stay here here or up there? What? All right, your claims.
Anybody have any?
Questions, comments, concerns?
Spending money.
Motion to approve claims, your second?
I'll second it.
All favor I.
Alright.
Yeah, both. Here. You report. Do you want to do a little bit of salary change? Motion to approve payroll claims.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll claims.
All favor I. Bye. Both. Here. So there's no payroll, it'll really be your salary changes? Your cigarette license? Uh, are the throne put in a request for the fast antique car time trial? Annual events, I don't know, but they ever have it last year?
I think you.
I think they approved it, I, yeah, they were gonna go through that, I thought. They, they wanted the approval, they weren't a hundred percent sure, but I think they did go through it.
That's too much, not context.
Yeah. So there's a request to close the uh, airport blacktop, September eleventh from eleven to five.
I'm gonna help him raise. Okay.
Run a radar farm, we're not the.
First level that will.
They are antiques, right? Alright.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, motion to uh, the, uh, accept that request and close that road on September eleventh, your second?
My second.
Another discussion? All favor I.
Bye.
Bye. Both. Alright, motion pass, Mr. Throne, no, he can continue as normal. Alright, resolution to set the hearing date to amend our urban renewal plan.
Bob Johnson got me everything I need, so. Just gotta agree to the. Is it July? July sixth.
July sixth.
Yeah, which we have Monday off.
Tuesday maybe again?
Okay, we'll let the schools know, so that they can, I think we have a session with them before, because they're, they'll be, they would be affected by it, and stuff like that, but. We've been through this before.
Yeah. Yeah. So, resolution twenty twenty-one dot oh six, dot oh seven, dot oh one, is resolution to set up a hearing date for July sixth to update the urban renewal plan for.
Make a motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Lowberg, Smitty, Stone, I. That resolution will pass. Alright, also, a resolution to withdraw from North Iowa Juvenile Detention Center.
I did not get language for that. So. Not sure, I, I, it's probably really simple, but.
I would assume, yeah, just let them say we're gonna withdraw from this twenty eighty.
I can check again and see if I can get something written out.
Gonna push that off till next week, just to be safe. You're on the central aisle anyways. On the central aisle anyways, so.
Yeah, they got that straightened out a while ago, so.
Yeah, as long as we got the credit taken care of, seven hundred dollar creditor, I didn't take one to burn up.
Now, and we do, just put one in yesterday, so down central.
So, alright, well. Push that off till the next meeting, then, and get the proper language, so we know we're doing it correctly. Right, uh, Cessar's office, business property tax credit allowances, dis allowances, and dis allowances for military and homestead.
This is just something we do every, every year for people who have basically address changes and levels of sales, I don't know if you wanna take a look at it or not.
These are just the ones.
And what about BPTC?
What does that mean?
Business property tax credit?
Yeah, we'll have to.
See the, see the applications and.
Put that on next.
I just send letters out to them to say, hey, you're not getting this anymore.
Okay. So. Motion to accept the business property.
It's just military and homestead.
Just military and homestead. I'll make, make that motion.
If there's a motion to uh, approve the uh, dis allowances for military and homestead exemptions, our second?
I'll second it.
Any other special? Hearing none, all favor I. Bye. 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 Both. Motion will pass.
No, no, I just gotta get the letters.
Okay. Warehouse, water damage.
I haven't.
Jason hasn't slept in here yet?
No.
It's not raining.
There isn't any water now, is there?
No.
I know Brian's very busy, so. Soon as he gets a chance to look at it, and you have some guidance over there.
Maybe I'll just take it off until I see him.
Might as well be continuing discussion, if something happens, we gotta continue to figure it out.
No, I've been doing it for years.
Yeah. I'll be against that, though. Alright, alright. Who we can.
Should be running on the inside.
Uh, what does that go, Melissa?
Morning. I have a long-term recovery care meeting Wednesday at one P M, and then uh, the North Iowa Corridor annual meeting is on Thursday. And Jennifer is bringing in another ten employees, so we're still putting a shout out for housing.
Oh, from Levante?
Yep.
Ten more, where they going?
Clarkson.
She was getting ten more, okay, good. Alright. Um. That they want to put all them Lake Mills area?
The closer to Lake Mills, the better, but they have been, um, the first dozen have been as far as Albert Lee and Forest City.
Good, you guys got anything for Melissa?
Just one thing, it's kind of for us, Melissa, um. John had contacted me again last week, you know, and I chatted, told him what our decision was, kind of on the I thirty-five the other. And he kind of, was still concerned, was still very interested in doing something, and he has some other ideas he'd like to discuss with us. Probably be, could we just do that in Winworth, that co-meeting with.
Yep.
Free, or could we?
That would be a, a good subject for the Winworth backco meeting, which is July twelfth.
Okay, um, I'll check, he, he gave me some dates where he couldn't be here. Um, I'll get in touch with you, and we probably get that on the agenda, he's got some things he wants to discuss, but maybe some. Other development besides just that area on the other side of the.
Okay.
Plan is, but he just touched on that, he's still trying to, you know, do the lease-to-buy thing on the one side, and then maybe do something on the other side, so. I don't know what his plan is, but it'd be nice if we could just all get together once, I did suggest maybe do twenty minute time slots, but that's hard to do, you know, it's a. It'd be best, I think, to do it as a development group, I think that's what we need to do, that's what he needs to do, so. Um, I'll give you, give you the dates, it's not available, I want to get a chance to look at them here, hopefully that's not one of them, so. Let's see if we can get them on.
Okay.
There's a reason that you could do a closed session if you wanted things to be, you just gotta record it.
Okay, well, if that, yeah, if that doesn't work, date for him, then we could set up a private meeting here, I guess, with him and. Give you guys, I'll send you the dates. Good, thank you.
Thanks, Morgan.
Goodbye.
Uh, people's service, water resource, we got our update last week. Um, Jason hasn't sent the report yet, I did talk to him a little bit, um, about the towers, and he hasn't seen the report yet, so since he did, he would. Let us know, and kind of give us the recommendation of what to do. Uh, department head discussion. Somebody gets, any questions, comments? Come on, Daniel, he's got something.
The only thing, you, you're probably already aware of that, brought these two up on speed, but uh. One that concerned me the most is Grafton, um, will not have a rescue unit after July first, Manley's pulled out. I talked to Bob Russ this morning as the EMS coordinator for Worth County, um, Northwood, it will not be signing with them, nobody in Mitchell's gonna be signing with them. Only thing we can do is page out the fire department and the ambulance out of Mesa, so. That's a little bit of a concern on our side of the world, that they don't have a EMS response, fast response, but that's all we can do, that's not up to us to get that for them, it's up to them, so.
Yeah, no, I know it's gonna be a bit of an issue, but it's been a number of years, that they've had opportunities. And of course, if there is a major incident where it turns into a mutual aid thing, you know, there's still the, the mutual aid calls, you know, Manley and, and Ken's would assist too, so. Yep, it's a, it's always deals, I guess. Getting, numbers are getting thin, you see it out there with the EMS people, so. Hard to keep on deers.
Well, and that'd be another good talking point for you guys, that's fair with the, with the EMS, so.
Um, fertile technically isn't either, right?
Fertile isn't, but they, with them in Hanlon Town, that works really decent, and then when some come in, our response style of Forest City, and they do that rapid response vehicle.
Hmm.
The paramedic vehicles, we get a pretty good response out of them.
Right. We have them there that close together, and then, about three, four miles apart, so that makes a huge difference. Yeah, that could be another good talking point on that, that's very, I agree. You get communities that don't have anything at all. Outside of fire, first aid. Any other department heads?
The uh. From emergency management, North Work System, we're still working on getting citizens signed up or, or moved over from the old system to that. Little bit over, the ones that opted in on the S M S system, there's like. A little over three hundred and fifty of them that have done that so far, I think we had on the old system about a thousand, between text message and email. That were in that system, um, out of seventy-four hundred residents, I'd like to see it higher than that, you know.
Right.
So that'll be, that'll be the main push that I'm doing, or the fair is, to get people signed up with that. And then on the internalist side, still need the employees, there's a lot of employees that haven't added their phone number into the, so that they can be sent a text message on them. Uh, either, uh, if they have a department issued phone, or a county issued phone, they should put that in, but then if they have a, a regular phone, they put that. Number into, they, they can put up the three numbers in there that they can get a, a county alert on, and, and that's just because they sign up on. The system for weather alerts and all that stuff, they're not gonna get an internal county alert on that unless they sign up under the county alert. The internal employee list, and they, they need to, I sent out an email a couple times on that, and if they have questions, they can call me, or call.
Think quarterly, we did a, we did a poll report on those, and just let all the department heads know who, who was getting awards and who didn't, so.
And I think, you know, as we talk later in our security thing, that's one of the. One of the concerns on that is that issue, so that'll help address that if we can get that.
But then your link, that took me to a website, is that, I mean, it was a, I don't remember what it said on.
A work item?
Yeah, is that? I know it had, for me, it had Mitchell County stuff on it too, and it had work. I know it had, for me, it had Mitchell County stuff on it too, and it had Worth County. And I, I don't know why, I mean, it.
You served two masters apparently.
Well, but I think we're using WENS over there yet, so I don't know.
They are, they, they are using, they, they, Mitchell County decided to stay with WENS, um.
I could sign up for general Mitchell County ones, but in Worth County, then it had specific.
Yes.
More detailed.
Yeah.
Option.
I think Mitchell County is gonna, they said when they went directly with WENS and not through the state, they, they got a lot more options than what they had before, so.
Why just, I wanted to make sure I was on the right, when I signed up for it, I was on the right website.
Or if you, if you go to Worth County's webpage and you go to the, that says get worth alerts right underneath the Sheriff's Office box. Click on that, that'll take you to that same page and then you're gonna go down.
I think I used your text message and went through that way. I just wanted to make sure it was the right site to sign up.
There's, there's several different ways to do it.
Yeah, I went through yours, I hope I got on. I tried to go to the one for the court. Website and it said it already existed, so then I went back and typed in the code or whatever he sent.
So we'll see, we can pull our.
Can I move all reports and let us know?
I will do later this month, I will do that. This was on there, our new system too. I have been sending out some, if you're in the old one, you probably have gotten some messages saying it will end June 30th. And stuff, so I'm trying to get those people that like procrastinate, get them to switch over, so. I might be one of them people sometimes.
Too often, we need any more alerts on my phone, but you know.
The, uh, the numbers on the old system were really pop just because of the, the 2012, the evacuation. That all of a sudden brought a bunch of people to the table that weren't sent up before, so.
Yeah, well, and then just for a, an example of how bad that data was, why we didn't use that data to transfer it over, just transfer it over into the new. One, the state hasn't, when they got that information from WENS, it was like in the bushel backs, like, here's all your numbers on the table. Good luck sorting it. And so it wasn't usable data and they've been working, the state's been working really, really hard to try and sort that out for people, they still haven't got it out to us. But just for an instance, if I would have sent out the alert I did last week to the voicemail thing, they would have sent 17,000. Voicemails, messages out. I'm pretty sure we don't have that many people wanting voicemails in Worth County. Um, I think the last time Joel sent a voicemail out, he got hate messages for that three days. Certainly off that system, I don't care what's going on in Worth County.
When we originally set up WENS, there was a geo-fencing problem that they never took care of. I, I, we fought with them for three, four years and still.
This was a good time to start a little bit fresh slate.
It, it was a good system, no doubt about it, but, you know, they never took care of that geo-fencing problem, so.
And this one offers a lot more options.
It does, yes. But I mean, you know, what, every time we send an alert out, most of Mason City would get our alerts and then get phone calls, we don't care about it.
I like that, what you left, that was.
Yeah, this'll, we'll have to say, yeah.
Sounds good. The other Department heads out there? If not Supervisor Weekly, Mr. Lowber.
Hi, I have North Iowa Children's Alliance again, just like last week. Looking for an area director and employer record, we had two options, one of them fell through. The other one hadn't gotten back to us, so we got another meeting this week on it, but we did get through the 22 budget, got that approved. And other than that, uh, oh, then we did an update on that Hancock Learning Center, we put all the money into and that's going to be good. No, one, Brad.
Oh, okay, I'll have that.
Where that one was gonna, gonna close and we put like 27,000 in it to keep it open. Cause there was like 80-some kids, 68 or, I think it was like 68 or, there was quite a few kids that went to it. So it wasn't a good idea to close it up. So daycare type system, um. Oh, and I went to Chuck Grassley's meeting event, that was interesting, never been to one before. Lot of subjects to deal with.
I bet. Was there quite a few people that attended that or?
Yeah, not even that, I was gonna say eight or 10. That included, that included the police officer and, and there are two people that were there and failed. So, yeah.
Was a lot of people working, it's hard to get to those things.
Yeah.
Mark?
I had nothing on my list, I guess, so.
Okay.
There's nothing on my calendar that I should have attended, I guess.
Yeah. I have a lot to do. Alright. Now, we will, uh. Take a motion to, uh. Or I will recess the meeting, I'll take a motion to go into closed session, uh, private code 21.5. Uh, and discuss our physical security review of our facilities. There's motions, your second? Alright, roll call vote, Lowber, I, maybe, Stone, I, alright, we will be entering closed session.
If you read further on, there's a lot of updating that needs to be done in the plans before we do any training.
Correct. Yes. Yep. Uh, there's not exercise security plan, so you know that's something they say we should do annually with girls and tabletops. Uh, next page, uh, facility security plan is missing key elements. I can, I can enumerate those if you guys want. Um, but basically identification of critical assets or areas, management use of physical security systems, perimeter security. It, we can go through these, uh, but I think one of the recommendations was to have a security committee. Security.
Yep.
Yep, a security facilitator or security manager. So somebody just kind of like, I suppose, the safety committee. Somebody that's in charge of that and making sure we're, we're jumping through all those hoops and doing what we need to do there. I don't know if you guys want me to go through all those or, or if you've read them already. I don't think I have.
Everybody got it.
Yep. Key elements, you know, nothing for terrorist incidents, uh, security communications. And I think, uh, we'll get down to that too. Uh, further on, uh, in the document, uh, facility is not tested, exercised or documented. It's mass notification system. Well.
Hey, zoom sound just turned back on.
Oh, good. Thank you, sir.
Joel, are you recording now?
We are back up and rolling.
I will reconvene the regular supervisor meeting. I think we pretty well fulfilled our agenda.
Maybe just mention that you're gonna add, since it wasn't on the recorded part, add on the next agenda about safety.
Yeah, the next agenda we'll add the safety and security discussion for the courthouse and all facilities, county facility. Anything else that needs to be added that we're missing? If not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second. All right. All right. Hi. Hi. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.